I also wanted to approve this. Thank you. That's fine.
I know we couldn't reach a consensus.
That's interesting. If you do.
They're trying something new because I'm going to have to do something new, I think.
Good evening. We'll go ahead and get started with its work session, the City of Burlington, City Council. Due to the COVID pandemic, this City Hall is closed to the public. We've got on the agenda tonight. So this will be for the proposed regular agenda for October 19th, 2020, the Thomas J. Smith Council Chamber City Hall. We've got the usual miscellaneous finances and miscellaneous, rather, minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarette permits, report and bonds, reports and bonds, and resolutions. We've got three of them. One, resolution one, resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. Resolution two, approving the final acceptance and release retention monies for the 2019 Recplex Road Extension Project. And resolution three, approving the resignation and release agreement. We also have a set date for public hearing, November 2nd, 2020, which would be the consideration of a sale of property locally known as 2024 South 8th Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. Eric, will that be where you talk about this now? Or did I jump ahead?
Did I jump ahead?
Did I jump ahead? I did. Thank you. Okay.
All right. Just to start off, I would note that John is not in the house, as people may notice, as they watch online. John is online, though, so he is part of the meeting and will be chiming in where necessary. So just so that people know, we do have another council member that's a part of this group tonight. Eric, if you want, I think you were probably set up for the first item on the agenda. If you wanted to go through the agenda in order, Lynda, we could start with that public hearing on 1101 South 6th Street.
Thank you, Jim. I got off a little bit there. So Eric will talk about that first agenda item then.
This is consideration of sale of property locally known as 1101 South 6th Street with conditions. This is located at the corner of Walnut and 6th. It's a property the City acquired through our abandoned building program. Is in need of quite a bit of work. It is a single-family property. Does have some off-street parking off of 6th Street there. But like I said, does have quite a bit of clean out and work that needs to be done to it. Did receive a bid for $500. Again, properties are sold as-is. It's up to the awarded bidder to rehab the property to minimum housing standards before there's any occupancy in the property. Electrical and plumbing do have to be signed off that they meet code or are brought up to code by an electrician and plumber as part of the project. This project needs siding repair, plumbing electrical upgrades, drywall patch and repair, floor replacement, kitchen and bath repair, reframing of walls and ceilings, and window replacement. It's a two-story home with two bedrooms and one full bath. And as I said, we currently have one bid on the property.
Okay. In the words of a former mayor, this will make someone a lovely home. Any comments?
Nope.
Now we have a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending section 73.04, special speed restrictions of chapter 73, speed regulations of the Burlington Municipal Code.
The ordinance change is previously discussed. It would change or amend the time in the special speed zone specifically to the school zones from previously listed at 4:00 to 5:00 PM. This is due to the Burlington School District's change in time due to COVID-19 kind of alterations to the schedule. So nothing else has changed since the previous conversation. So I can answer any questions.
Jim, is this one we can advance? Yeah. We can waive a third? I noticed the signage has already been updated.
The signage was updated, but not by the City of Burlington. I believe the school district maybe had done that. It kind of is the reason why we're going through these motions. It kind of happened and then requested. We had a conversation internally amongst the city. So they are not the proper type of reflectivity.
Do you have any questions?
We're not.
Go ahead, John.
Go ahead, John.
Okay. Sorry about that. It looked like he was walking away. It's delayed. So if and when the school goes back to the normal schedule, are we going to change back and we'll have to go through this motion again?
Due to the ordinance change, you would have to go back through the motions to change it to four o'clock time if you would like. However, in discussing it with the police department, we think that there's enough activities around the schools that maybe justify leaving it at 5:00. But that is something that, I mean, could be determined at a later date because I think that the school's schedule is planned through at least May.
Is it worth noting that if someone is cited between the hours of 4:30 and 5:00, between now and the council meeting next Monday before this is officially adopted, that that isn't enforceable?
Yeah.
I mean, have we cited anybody between that time? I mean, I.
No, as of now, no one has been cited. But you would be correct. It would not be enforceable until it's been enacted by council. That is correct.
All right. So I just wanted to make note of that.
Yep, you're correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Anyone else have any other comments? Okay, moving on. Number three, motion of motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending section 123.01, permit required of chapter 123, special events permits of the Burlington Municipal Code. Eric.
This again, second reading, no changes from the previous. Updating the permit required section of the special events code primarily to clarify when a special event is required. Adding in that if it's inside the Burlington Depot, there's not a permit required now that that's operated by BRE. And then clarifying the special events that are generally are generally where the public is invited to attend a property held on public property. If someone's putting it out on Facebook or advertising through the paper, media, that it's open to the public and it's in on city property outside, then we'd require a special event permit for that.
Thanks, Eric. Any comments?
Can this one be waived and moved on?
It's up to you. Is it, you're all comfortable with it?
I don't have a problem with waiving the third.
On either one?
On either one. What about you, Lynda?
I'm fine.
John, you got any problem with waiving the third reading on either the speed regulations or the special event permits?
No, let's waive. Thank you for asking.
Okay. Moving on to the resolutions. Resolution one, approving nuisance abatements for various properties.
You typically don't discuss.
Oh, I don't have to move on to that. Okay. So then do I announce the set for the public hearing?
You have the final pay for the Recplex Road?
Yeah.
That item number two?
Two.
Oh, I see it. So we have a resolution approving the final acceptance and release of retention monies for the 2019 Recplex Road Extension Project.
So the road project out near the Recplex, which involves an extension on Broadway and then the newly created Hinkle Drive is complete. In your memo, you will see that we're issuing a final payment of $0, which isn't traditionally how we would do it. However, they were able to draw down on some of the stored materials and payment. And the reason why we haven't finalized out the project is because we've had some discrepancies over a crack, I guess is what you would say, in an uncontrolled joint that essentially has led to what you see secondarily in the behind the memo in the package is in a maintenance agreement for this. The crack was caused, in my opinion, by the contractor. And so in order to justify or to make sure that it's taken care of over the next five years, this maintenance agreement is a part of that. The resolution needs to be amended to add the approval of this maintenance agreement separately in the final pay. It just talks about closing out the project and accepting the infrastructure and then paying and releasing retention. Doesn't mention any of the maintenance agreement, which is a big aspect of the final pay. So that resolution, because it's in the consent agenda, I would want to bring up that I'll make an addition to that resolution that calls out the approval of this agreement. Essentially, it gives us authorization. If we see any further degradation in the crack, that we force the contractor to go back in there and remedy the situation. We don't think that it's a massive issue, but in there it talks about kind of the defects that we would see and want the contractor to go back and remedy that. The other thing I would bring note of is the total ASB cost says $1,881,327. That does not include the engineering costs, so I would want that added to the memo. So we funded this using a RISE grant for part of the project. The bigger remainder is out of tax increment financing. And it came to a total budget of $1.4 million. So I will make sure that the numbers are corrected and show the full cost of what it costs the city. So.
So we're not actually saving 180 grand on the overall?
You're still saving money, but I would want to make sure that it's got true accurate numbers in there for the engineering and everything.
So two questions on the warranty deed. So A, is that enough? There's 5,000 in there, right?
It's plenty to give it.
Is that enough to cover whatever? Because if the panel were to fail, you'd have to replace the panel. Is that enough to cover it?
Correct.
It is?
Yes.
Okay. And then what did they do to cause it? Like not enough rebar?
Well, that's that's some of the discrepancy and the reason why there's a $0 on there and it's taken two months to close the project. So what happened is in the means and methods, they went in with a paver and in my opinion, I believe it's because they were in a hurry and wanted to get done. And so they used a paver and laid concrete that when they put it in is a lot stiffer. The slump is a lot less. And so they left a two-and-a-half, three-foot section and they poured, you know, relatively wet concrete side by side. Well, the idea was to vibrate it and get the aggregate to interlock to so a crack isn't created. But what Jesse and I believe happened is a cold seam was created. So this was all firmed up and then you pour concrete right up against it. Traditionally, we would have a contract to put rebar in there to have that joint so that they don't separate. And we believe, you know, if it goes bad, that it'll pull apart and make that gap wider. And so that's why we wanted to be able to put 5,000 in there, which would involve replacement of that three-foot panel that really wasn't supposed to be a panel. And it would involve putting rebar and then repouring the concrete.
Does it, if nothing happens in five years, is the lifespan of the panel affected as a result of this crack?
The structural ability of the concrete, I don't think is an issue. If there's going to be an issue with that crack, we will see it within the five years.
Okay. That's my concern. All right. Thank you.
Any other comments? John, you good?
Nick, is there any other panels we should be concerned about?
No, this is the main concern. It's just when we saw in the inspection and the way the means were done to get this result was the concern. Everything else has gone through the punch list and been reviewed. So no concerns for anything else.
Thanks, Nick.
Good. Thanks. Number three, we have a resolution approving resignation and release agreement. Jim?
Simply a resolution acknowledging the resignation of Battalion Chief Logan. That is effective November 1. He's already signed off on the agreement and will sign off on it after this goes through council.
Okay. Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Any further questions? Are you pretty good? Number four, we have a set date for a public hearing, November 2nd, 2020. That'll be, anything else on that? And then we have a consideration of a sale of property locally known as 224 South 8th Street, City of Burlington, Iowa with conditions. Oh, the next meeting? Okay. I keep trying to give that one to you, Eric. Just bite on it and take it. And now we have some discussion items. Number one, search firm for city manager. Jim?
We put out a request to various search firms that have a history of doing city manager searches within the state of Iowa. Stephanie, I think you put tomorrow, or I'm sorry, Wednesday is the closing date for receiving back proposals. We've gotten a couple back. I've talked with another firm that is talking about partnering with another firm for submitting a proposal. So we do expect a third, possibly those two firms to be doing separate proposals. I'm not sure. So there might be either three or four proposals to choose between. The firms will have, there'll be a little bit of variability between how they do approach it. Stephanie and I were having a discussion about how to make a selection between them. And I mean, part of it's going to be about cost. There's going to be a difference in how the cost is, but there may be a little bit of difference in how they go about that process, too. Talked with John earlier about the idea of having two council members involved in reviewing those and then bringing back a recommendation to the council. And that recommendation may be, depending on what your comfort is, a choice of one of those proposals and moving forward with an agreement with one of those search firms immediately. You may have a desire, after looking at them, to maybe interview them in person. There, and I don't know, there might be some other recommendation that you have as a group coming out of that. But if I could get, and I don't know, John, did you have any other comments that you wanted to put on that? We were looking at possibly Thursday if that would work for folks, those that were involved to do it. If that doesn't work, we could look at a future date as well. John?
Yeah, so I would agree with Jim. We did talk about that earlier. Personally, I don't feel the need to interview the company, but I do feel we need to go over the contracts and some of the results in depth. So I told Jim I'd be available, make myself available for a Zoom meeting. If that is the desire of council, we just need another council member to come forward and volunteer if they have the time.
I can do it.
I was gonna say, I can make myself available Thursday afternoon as well.
I'm not going to get in the center of that choice. John, maybe you might want to make a choice who you would say to have.
It's not that big of a deal. If you absolutely want it, you can have it. Otherwise, if you're.
No, I know what you're doing with the police chief. That's why I didn't want to.
Well, this is just for selecting the city manager.
Company.
As a whole, this is for selecting the search firm. As a whole, we'll select the city manager. So I just, this is a one-time meeting, right? To select.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay. Got to be careful what I get myself involved with here. Yeah, if you're available, how about it? If you're tied up, I can make myself available.
Whatever you want to do. I'm good.
So Bill?
Yeah.
Is that it?
Yep.
Is there a time on Friday that works for us? Stephanie was available at like 10:00 in the morning?
Thursday.
Thursday. Or anytime in the afternoon?
10:00 will work.
Does that sound good? And John, how about you? I know you have a busy.
Good.
I know you have a busy schedule sitting there at home right now.
Yeah, it's vacation, so I'll make time.
All right. Sounds good.
I was gonna say, I'd bet a large sum of money he's holding a beer right now. So.
Discussion item number two.
We'd make money on that.
No wonder you asked me to fill in for you. Discussion item number two, the 2019 Annual Police Report. Major Jeff Klein.
Good evening, council. Each of you has a hard copy of the 2019 Annual Report. Generally, we like to finish this up late summer, but obviously with the COVID pandemic, it made it a little bit different, stretching it out a little bit thinner. So we'll go through this. First page, as you see, is just the organizational chart where we start. Still listing Police Chief Kramer as the chief. This is through December 31st of last year. Currently, we're allocated for 46 officers. We have a couple of vacancies right now with retirements, but we're looking to fill those within the next two months.
This shows three vacancies, four vacancies, five vacancies. Do you still have five vacancies?
No, we do not. We have two. Those vacancies would be officers that were hired. This chart was made prior to those vacancies being filled.
Okay. So you're down to two.
We're down to two. That is correct. Gives you a general idea of where we're at age-wise from the department. We're split pretty much evenly. We're on the whole a very young department. But obviously, as you move further toward the right, we have a large amount of officers that are, for lack of a better term, fairly seasoned. The bulk of those officers are our command staff that have more than 20 years' experience each. And then I would venture a guess that our last probably 10 to 12 hires all fit into that age group down at the bottom left. This gives you a little bit of an idea of the comparison and calls for service between the police department in Burlington, the police department in West Burlington, and the sheriff's department. In 2019, we answered roughly 32,000 calls for service in comparison to West Burlington at just over six and the county at just over five. Call for service that required police response, I should probably indicate that we assign a call for service to anything that relates to the officer calling in and asking for vehicle registration, the officer coming into contact by phone with someone. These are actually calls that required a police response where we arrive in person and have contact with the public. So there's just about a 5,000 call difference between what we may handle on the phone or via the internet versus our officers coming into personal contact. Gives you a little bit of a breakdown about our most common calls for service between 2018 and 2019. As you can see, outside of suspicious activity, our largest call for service are animal calls. And I think you'll find that's pretty consistent year to year. Most animal owners and most people concerned about the welfare rentals will make that a priority to them. Suspicious activity can be anything. People that call in a gunshot complaint that turns out to be fireworks, that'll be listed under suspicious activity. Two people walking down the street in the middle of the evening, no particular reason, just look out of the ordinary, would be called into suspicious activity. So those things can cover a myriad of different events. General comparison of citations issued from 2015 to 2019, citations on the downtrend in 2019. I think you'll find that as time continues to pass, we take the opportunity to become more invested in that, for lack of a better term, personal touch. Enforcement action sometimes isn't always effective. If we can take the time to engage our citizens or engage those individuals that we're dealing with in something other than enforcement, I think we're finding that we have more success. Probably no surprise to anyone that speeding is near the top of our traffic citations. Suspended or revoked licenses are leading that area, and unfortunately, no insurance. So my PSA for tonight would be to make sure that everyone has insurance. One of the most common calls we deal with outside of suspicious, obviously our motor vehicle accidents. The motoring public is a constant for us. In 2019, we had 741 property damage accidents. Again, that's down from previous years. 90 personal injury accidents and one fatality accident. This chart reflects the number of handwritten reports that are generated based on those calls for service. If you remember, we handled 27,000 calls for service, in-person calls with community members. Through those 27 calls, we generated just over 4,500 handwritten reports. So I guess to balance that out, about a quarter of the time, we're generating a handwritten report for some type of call for service. I'm not going to bore you with four pages of stats and charts. You guys can look at that at your convenience if you choose to. It simply breaks down the different calls for service that we had running from 2015 to 2019 and gives you a concrete number as to how each of those played out. Beginning in October of last year, we returned our K-9 program to active use. Officer Clay Beckman is our K-9 officer. We purchased K-9 Rico from a company out of Florida, and Officer Beckman has traveled to Florida last October and will again go this October for his recertification. He is certified for both narcotics and article searches as well as tracks. Down at the bottom of the chart, you can see what his statistics were in each of those cases. Clay is an incredibly active K-9 handler, not only in the enforcement activity, but out in the public. Clay does presentations for schools, presentations for civic groups, and has participated with several area groups that represent site homes for disadvantaged people. And they requested Clay's assistance in moving through those houses to ensure that that safe environment continues without narcotics. So Clay is incredibly active and he's been a great asset along with his partner Rico. Total number of arrests, we can extrapolate that out based on the charts that you have there for the number of calls for service. Specifically, if you wanted to look at assaults, homicides, anything of that nature, you can make the comparison based on all of that statistical data to what you see there. The continuing downward trend, as we talked about with citations, those are down. Physical arrests were also down as well. This is a hot bucket, hot button topic right now, simply based on the use of force that has come into public scrutiny nationally. The average use of force by police anytime there's an arrest contact is 1.4%. As you can see, from 2015 to 2019, Burlington has not eclipsed that number. And as of 2019, we were at 0.67%. So we almost cut in half what the national average is for use of force incidents, which is a credit to not only the officers and the restraint that they exhibit, but the training that they receive. Violent crime obviously is what you see more in the news than anything else. Shots fired and gun calls are by far our most common. We've been very fortunate that we have not hit double digits in homicides as a lot of other larger metropolitan, excuse me, metropolitan cities have done nationally. We were a little bit higher with six homicides in 2019. And I believe of the 6, 9, 11, 14, of the 14 homicides on there, I think there are only two that remain unsolved, which is also a credit to the job that our detective division does. This gives a little bit of reflection about what our POP unit, our investigators, and our narcotics task force do. Our POP unit, which is our problem-oriented policing unit, deals specifically with firearm-related crimes and firearm-related crimes that end up in some type of narcotics trafficking as well. The POP unit deals directly with the federal authorities in the Quad Cities. It's been our experience that if we can get someone charged in federal court, the length of their prison sentence and the elimination of that negative influence in our community is much longer than in state court. We've had a great deal of success with that. There's also a breakdown of the types of narcotics that we're seizing and the number of handguns and knives that we've taken off the street in 2019. These photos just give a small example, intermingled with the text there, that show you all of the civic involvement that the police department has. We encourage our officers to become involved in the community outside of what we do in law enforcement. It's a big part of our interview process when we're interviewing a new officer. We take a great interest in what they do away from the job and how they give back to our community. Volunteering is something that we encourage, and obviously, we achieve that. Each year, we have our officers submit recommendations for their peers as to who they think the officer of the year was. Our officer of the year award was named after Lieutenant Stephen Cassidy, who passed away in 2007 from cancer. After that, we renamed our officer of the year award after him. The 2019 award winner is Officer Tyler Henning. Officer Henning's been on the department about four years. He has just been moved from his patrol division assignment to a criminal investigation division assignment as of this week. It's something that Tyler has earned, and he's also earned the respect of his peers, as is evidenced by that award. Questions at all? I can answer from council.
John, you have any questions?
Chief, could you make sure that I get a hard?
Chief, could you make sure that I get a hard copy of that?
Yes, sir. I will leave that with Linda, if that's okay with you.
We'll get to one, John.
So I have a couple of quick questions. So narcotics violations dropped almost 35% from 17 to 19. Now, did the violations drop because the enforcement was less, because we didn't have a dog? Or did they drop because people were actually using less narcotics?
I think it's a combination of both. What also comes into play that might not be shown in our statistics, because of the job that the POP unit has done, we've partnered more with the state and the federal law enforcement authorities. So occasionally, those statistics that we generally would have from a community or a local level will become part of the state or federal statistics. So that may be some of the decrease you're seeing as well.
And if they're charged federally, it's not an intermittent sentence, right?
No, it is. It's a determined amount of time, correct.
And then, the warrant entries? 2015, there was 375, and the following four years, there was nothing. It was just, is it not reporting it?
It's...
Or what is a warrant entry?
A warrant entry is something that comes from the clerk of court that is entered by the dispatch center. So it's not anything that we're doing physically. It's a statistical component that dispatch uses.
Okay.
Are they able to do much in the schools right now with COVID, or is that kind of on hold?
We still have both officers in the school. Officer Jesse Hill is in our middle schools, alternates back and forth. Officer Carper is at the high school. Depending on the interactions that they have with students, Officer Carper has been away from the high school for a period of time because he was exposed to a student with COVID. Part of the school district's response to COVID is if you have that exposure to it, they're going to ask you to stay away for a two-week period of time. Our department policy is a little bit different because we're in essential service as long as Officer Carper tests negative and feels comfortable returning to work without any existing symptoms, then we put him back on the street until that 14-day period has ended.
Yeah, I didn't know if, like, Officer Beckman and Rico, are they doing anything with that right now?
Not right now.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Moving along, discussion item three, Parks Department STEM Award.
Real quick, before Ryan, Mr. Ryan, starts his report, I'd like to recognize him. He was recently appointed to the State of Iowa Parks and Recreation Committee. Is that correct?
On the Board of the Parks and Recreation Association.
Yeah, which is a pretty big honor, so.
All right, congrats.
Quick form recognition for him.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you. And for those of you that don't know me, I'm Ryan Gorley. I'm the Superintendent of Parks for the City of Burlington. Just want to give you an update on our outdoor classroom. Jessica Gerling, right here. We're gonna tag-team you on this one, so kind of get started here. So a picture of the outside there and a picture from inside the outdoor classroom. So our outdoor classroom is located in Crepo Park, across the street from the Core statue. This was a project that we began a few years back. BNSF gave us a donation of $10,000 to provide a project for the park, and this is what we decided to go with. Little bit of discussion there, and we felt like the outdoor classroom was a good opportunity for us. So we started with that. Asked the Crepo Park Foundation for some money. They provided some funding to this, and then the general fund, obviously, has kicked in for this project. So we'd like to thank those donors. The signage that you see up there, most of that was paid for by a CEP grant from the REAP Foundation. So we were able to get a lot of money for that from them. Initially installed in 2018, we've just got the signage up this year, and we've actually been running some programming out of the outdoor classroom at this point. Some of the signage that we have, we have four groups of panels that we can interchange anytime we like. First one we're showing here is the urban animals. So we kind of take this as an educational opportunity to talk about animal tracks and scat, the animals that are in our neighborhoods, and birds that you can see out in the park. Pollinators, so this is kind of a big deal. Very important one for us to have. Plants that are used for pollinators described there, also the animal life that pollinates. And then in the center, we talk about how to kind of create your own garden, if you'd like to do so. Life cycles, we get into life cycles a little bit. So on insects, and then flowers and plant life cycles, and then we have the bullfrog in the middle. And then trees, big deal in Crepo Park. It's our arboretum, so we wanted to make sure we had something about trees. In the center, we have the anatomy of the tree, and then the other two boards are tree identification for a lot of natives that we have in our area. So all those trees are located in our park system. The use of the classroom, so we've been using the outdoor classroom on a limited basis right now. We've done quite a few tree walks, master gardeners, some classes. Here we can see our city forester, Patrick Moore, with a class here. This was last fall, I believe. It's a good time. We really enjoy doing that. We'd like to do a lot more programming out of this classroom with all sorts of groups and organizations. And we have some new opportunities, and I'm gonna turn it over to Jessica to discuss that.
I'm Jessica Gerling, Project Coordinator for the Development and Parks Department. So just to go over quickly what the Governor's STEM Advisory Council is. They started in 2012, and that STEM Council then has been partnering with local agencies to provide training and materials to successful applicants for this award. Becky Ruberg with the Public Library has actually been very successful with these awards and has been doing a lot of STEM programming for our community and does a great job. So in chatting with her and learning more about her role and what they do at the library, we had kind of found that there would be opportunities for us to possibly have some of those activities in an outside setting in this outdoor classroom. So we can watch this short video just to outline that STEM Council a little more and what their goals and missions are.
Team, we're on the right track. There's no better way to engage students than hands-on play with the Iowa STEM Scale-Up Program is all about. Since 2012, the Iowa Legislature has teamed up with state business and industry partners to provide funding for a wide range of proven STEM units on robotics, computer coding, engineering design, animal science, agriculture, wind energy, and more. These exciting units have made a positive impact on hundreds of thousands of students in Iowa and thousands of teachers, both in school and out of school, like me.
And me. I've seen the STEM Scale-Up Program promote collaboration and transform bored students into eager learners. Because the topics and materials of STEM relate to them, students learn more. It allows me to facilitate rather than dictate, and students like that. Best of all, these STEM programs teach problem-solving and other soft skills that are valued in the workplace and all through life.
That's important because right now, there aren't enough people for the growing number of STEM jobs available in Iowa. Not only does the STEM Scale-Up Program get students interested in STEM subjects and STEM careers, but kids who participate also show strong gains in science, math, and reading on the Iowa assessments. It all adds up. Engage students plus the STEM Scale-Up Program equals more interest in STEM careers right here in Iowa.
For funding that helps transform classrooms.
For teaching soft skills that will help students for life.
And for helping students find their passions, there's nothing quite like the STEM Scale-Up Program. It's changing how we all think about learning.
So that Advisory Council provides just that. Their mission is to provide those opportunities with the interactive materials to provide those provide those activities for kids to grow that interest in STEM and cultivate that experience in nature for us specifically. So we applied for this award in March of this year, and then we were awarded then. We were notified of the award in early summer, and then Ryan and I just recently participated in the virtual training late July this year. So the Science Center of Iowa provided that training, and it was excellent. It was great to be able to gear up for future programming for the parks and get ready to ask those questions and help know what to expect with the kids coming in. So we already have been at STEM Fest with, at SEC with, is it, who hosts that one? Yeah. I think it was the partnership that has a hand in hosting that, but they get grant funding for that as well. But a lot of different area organizations participate in that, and it's a really great time. And we had a lot of fun being able to engage with different, all ages, actually, that showed up that day. So I guess future now. Earlier, you could see that that classroom that Patrick was with, we had a young student named Avery was actually there. And she has actually fallen in love with it, and now every year, her family then, this year, they picnicked and they took a picture of her next to the tree. And hearing stories like that's kind of why we're doing this. So our award's going to consist of four different themed kits, so they're going to be nature-based. Different examples would be the Homes and Habitats, Science Sprouts, Fascinating Farmers, Culinary Chemistry, excuse me. So we're really excited to get those materials in late winter now. I think everything was pushed back like everything else with COVID this year. So this is actually Avery. I was just talking about her. I got permission from her mom to use this photo, but it's kind of neat to see, yeah, she's, her interest has grown in the parks and just in nature in general, being able to learn about that in that environment itself. So future times for us, we hope to use this for our summer camp program and then evolve the programming as we learn more about it and the need and the appetite for it in the community. And that's it. Any questions?
Great program. We're excited.
Thank you. Any questions, Council? John?
No, actually, nothing but congrats. Great job, great work.
It always amazes me when I hear someone discover your signboards for the first time and how they are excited they are. "Do you know they have this out at the park?" And I learned all about the trees and the animals, and yeah, it's kind of neat. Good job, guys.
I'll tell you a story. So we drive through Crepo Park all the time, and out there is a tree. And I'm not sure if it's on our property or not, but you can see it from the park road. It has two orbs on the side of it, which are right next to each other, and it makes the tree look like it has a butt. And the kids call it Fred the Butt Tree. And I can't go through Crepo Park without driving by Fred the Butt Tree almost daily at this point. So just wanted to throw that out for you. That's what my five- and six-year-old decide is important to them on a daily basis, so.
We have one that has the face of an owl, too, I'll show that to you.
Yeah, and then I'll just have something else I have to drive by, so that'll be great. But yeah, I figured I'd share that with you. Enjoy that.
See, stories like that keep you young. And on future discussion items, we have the TAMA Project Update. Doug Walls here? Is he calling in, or?
No, Future.
Oh, Future. I can't get it straight today, and I do have my glasses. Okay, so do we have any other items people want to talk about? Jim looks like he's biting at the bit for something here.
Are Gerlings, are they, are you guys related, or?
Gerly and Gerling.
Oh, Gorley and Gerling. Okay, it's different, okay. Yes, they do get that all the time. They are not related. The names are different. I've been pushing them for the last, I don't know, three months to come and talk about STEM. I think that some of these things that they are working on, they're not necessarily, I mean, part of what they think of typically as their duties, but they push it in the realms that I think really enhance what we are as a community, and it's pretty important. Wanted to do a reminder, goal-setting session tomorrow night at 5:00. John will be again participating. We're gonna end up having to do that him by Zoom, I think, so he can see the, well, I don't know. We'll see how that's getting hooked up. Rich is gonna help us get him hooked onto it. Radio, I heard that there was a decision on who was gonna do that. Who is that?
I think Robert and I.
I'm not available. I'm sorry.
Yeah, Rob said he would, and like that.
Okay.
And the only other item that I had was, you know, we've been trying to get to a position where we could have a large enough setting to be able to have audience participation without having to be cramped by social distancing requirements. We're looking to start, we're in place to start November 2nd down at the auditorium. So the regular council meeting on November 2nd, we should, we, absent something coming up that tells us different, right now, we are planning on that being down at the auditorium. They've got the equipment that will work to make that happen. They've tested it out. Everything seems to be online for that. So, and that's really all I had for tonight, so.
So maybe as council members, you should plan on getting there just a little bit early to make sure everything can go.
We need to be there early.
First run-through, I'm thinking.
Make sure that you're at the right location is what I'm most important, most concerned about, so. But yeah, that's it for tonight. We should be all set, though, for tomorrow. We're providing, gonna have two pizzas on hand.
Oh, sweet.
One vegetarian, one meat pizza. Anything else that you want to have, whether it's drinks or if there's an alternative food that you want to have in place of that, you're welcome to bring it along. We just wanted to make sure that we had something that was provided as part of that.
If John's drinking beer, I'm gonna go to John's, and I'll just zoom in.
I will have my, I will have my help covered. I'll just put that out there.
Okay, that's good to know. We're not delivering a pizza to your place. So, other than that, that should be it for tonight, unless there's other items from the Council.
Council, anything to add?
Ryan, looks like you got something.
Matt, I wanted to personally thank you. We did get the disc golf sign to try today to let there be a rotary. Yes, we can do that, too. Wanted to personally thank you. We did get the new disc golf signs up today that you donated to the park system.
Good.
And they look fantastic, so encourage everybody to go out and play and use those. Also, Rotary on Friday is gonna be helping us with the tree planting in White Park, Dankort Crepo Park, and out at the Reclex.
Yeah, so this year, I'm the Rotary President, and I wanted to do our first Rotary Day of Service. So I figured what better organization to pair up with than the Burlington Parks people? So we're gonna help them plant trees. Excited about that.
All right, good job. Anybody from the audience have anything they want to share? Otherwise, I think that's a wrap. Thank you. It was my very first work session, so thanks for bearing with me.
Real quick, I did want to say thank you to Chief Klein. I was able to get down and follow in John's footsteps at the simulator in the basement. That piece of equipment is fantastic. It's gonna be beneficial for our community for years to come. I did far better than the mayor. It's definitely worth noting. So I also want to, yeah, I want to throw a tidbit out there. So my Rotary plug, again, we are holding a 5K this year, which will be entirely within the confines of Aspen Grove Cemetery on October 24th. For those of you watching from home, I would encourage you to go and sign up. It's gonna be a really unique 5K because, again, it's all within inside the cemetery. So if you're looking for that, you can go to Facebook Burlington Rotary Club. There's a link on there you can sign up for.
Doesn't it benefit books or reading or kids?
Yes, so it helps the club. We, our primary initiative is literacy. So we provide books to WIC, and we go into all the Head Start schools and read to them and provide them their own book, and these types of fundraisers are...